Welcome. It is Tuesday, January 11th at 6:32 PM. This is the Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees' regular meeting. I am calling the meeting to order and we are all here in person with the exception of Rachel Litback, who had a medical procedure and couldn't be with us tonight. She's doing well, just couldn't be here tonight. So, our first order of business is closed session. We have one item on our closed session, which is conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation and significant exposure under government code 54956.9, special education program dispute. We don't have anybody in the audience, so we don't have any public comment on this item, and I will therefore call us into, I will go ahead and recess to closed session at 6:33. All right, welcome everybody. It is 7:09 and we are reconvening in open session. Our first order of business in open session are a couple of procedural items. I don't have a long thing to say tonight about our moment of democracy for our procedural items other than being that it is the new year, I just wanted to share a moment of appreciation for all of the people who work in the district and have been putting in huge amount of times since we came back. So I just wanted to say, part of saying a pledge, I often think of as a moment of appreciation. And right now, I'm feeling super, super appreciative for all of the staff and the nurses and the principals and everyone in this district who just continues to roll with everything that is showing up in our community and everywhere. So, just a moment of appreciation.
Well said.
All right, and upon that moment of appreciation, let us say the pledge of allegiance. When you're ready. One, two, three.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our next procedural item is adoption of the agenda and the time allocations therein. Fellow trustees, does anybody have any amendments to the agenda?
No.
And if not, entertain a motion to adopt it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I think I'm...
We have a motion and a second. And all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None. Great. Our agenda is approved, so now we can move on with our agenda. Onto item number D, which is communications and report out from closed session. There is nothing to report out from closed session, just a discussion. So we don't have a report out from closed session. And now we will move to public comment on items that are on, not on, the agenda. So, we value all of the public comments, and we have a few people here in the audience tonight. So, with the agenda item, with public comments that are not on the agenda, we can't take any action on any of those items here tonight because they aren't on the agenda. But we are here to listen carefully and appreciate what you have to say, and it's always good to hear from the public. If the comment is about something that's on the agenda, we'll kind of steer you to that agenda item if you come up here. And so if there's anyone here who is interested in making a public comment on something that's not on the agenda, please come up to the podium, state your name, your affiliation, and give us a short, we have each speaker limited to three minutes when you're up at the podium. So, since we don't have that many people here tonight, we can go with the full three minutes. And can I get a show of hands, how many people here want to speak on non-agenda items? Anyone? No? Okay. All right, well then, we can go ahead and move on to board announcements. Item number three, board announcements. Are there any...
Wesley?
No, that's my bottom announcement, right?
Any board announcements from...
None for me.
Nope. My only quick board announcement is that the governor's budget, I spent, oh, this morning, I read all the news about the governor's budget just came out today. So if anybody hasn't looked into that, there's a lot of news out there about the governor's budget. I'm sure we'll hear much more about that as it applies to us. So, that's just a piece of news that just give everyone a heads up on. All right. Correspondence communication to the board. Do we have any, we don't have any items on that. And YES Foundation report.
Right, so Chelsea Donovan, Executive Director for YES, is here with us this evening. And thank you so much, Chelsea. Have you, you've never met anybody of these folks in person?
All 3D now, is it?
Yes, absolutely.
Nice to see you.
Yeah. And then Chelsea also happens to be a man or parent as well.
Yeah.
All right, and there's the podium there if you'd like to come up.
If we can get you in the microphone. There is a listening audience out there in whatever verse. So, thank you.
Sounds good. I've done it by Zoom a few times, but this is my first since I've had this position in about a year and a half that I've been able to come here. So, it's nice to be here. Thank you. I just wanted to give you an update. We're feeling optimistic, which is a great word for all of us to hear these days. We had a really good first half of fundraising year. We are about 80% of our annual goal right now, which is amazing. We have raised around $700, a little over $700,000. Our goal this year, which is reduced over 20% still, is $890,000. So we're feeling really positive that we're at that place right now. The best indication of health for fundraising for YES is of course participation numbers. And we did some comparisons compared to 2018 to this year. We're not that far behind. And 2018 was our, kind of our banner year. I think it was our largest grossing fundraising year. So we're roughly, we're in the mid-40s, mid to low 40s for participation. And in 2018, it was upper 40s, almost 50%. So we're not too far behind and we're feeling good about that. As many of you may know, our cycle is the first part of the year, we do our matching challenge. And our second half of the year, early spring, will be our participation challenge. And so that's where we're really going to push that. We've been doing a lot of messaging with content, really trying to connect our parents and guardians with the teachers that we fund. A lot of interviews with art and music teachers, and we're going to continue that interview series. I think it's really effective and it helps people really understand who these people are that inspire their children and teach their children, you know, for all five schools. So, we're feeling good right now about that. But of course, we need a couple of good years in a row to continually increase our budget. But we really want to maintain and commit to covering art and music for Ross Valley School District. We've also been able to pay our monthly payments to the district of $70,000 since September. We just made a payment recently as well, Chris, I don't think I told you yet, for January. So that feels really good and we're on track for that. And in terms of programming, people are happy right now in the classroom and we're seeing some beautiful art from the children, some great music. We have a lot of our YES site leads who get to take pictures and communicate that to their school. So I think some, a lot of parents and guardians have been able to see what their children have been doing. Theater is back and that's been exciting. White Hill was of course our first, you know, jump back into the show and that went well. Obviously, we're dealing with a lot with the variant right now. The theater group with all of the directors are doing a really good job of communicating and making sure that we're aligned with district COVID protocols. Anna Barker, our director, has recently come out with communication for all principals to also forward to all their teachers, which I hope they've received, and to all the families, just reiterating what we're doing and how we're aligning with the district. Of course, this, as we all know, changes daily, so we want to make sure we're in the loop there and communicating with the families. But she's feeling very good. She's gone to all sites. We're getting outside as much as possible when we can. Kids seem really happy. The first show is Wade Thomas, which is going to be, I believe it's February 11th. It's tricky, but we're at the playhouse. Show is still on. There's going to be, of course, modifications, but they're paying attention and making sure that the kids could at least get into the playhouse. Maybe it won't be a big crowd, but they're going to be able to get on the stage. So we're really, you know, crossing our fingers that that's going to work. So we'll have four shows. The last show for elementary will be Manor, and that will be March 18th. And of course, we're hoping for a very different climate by that time. But it feels really good to have the theater program back. And that's it. We're just, we're feeling good and we're not planning a lot of events right now. We're thinking about one end of March, but we're holding tight to see how things go. But if we can, that will be our first one in two years. But that's it. It's a good report right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see you in person.
I would like to say that it's probably one of the most important things, I think, that this district has outside of our own work, is your work. And actually, you know, having a child almost out of our district now and having one already out, you really recognize the body of work that YES does and how important it really is to all of the things that I think back on my kid's time in school. I really don't think about their math class very much, right? I really don't think about a lot of...
Excuse me, y'all.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying my kid didn't get an A in math. I'm just saying, like, the things I remember are a lot of the, the things that they remember are a lot of the things that the YES group provides. And a lot of people really don't get it until you get into it to understand what the money is for. So it's a constant new churn. And to do such an amazing job with a pandemic and to have the numbers kind of coming back, it goes without saying that I think everyone is really grateful. And I think all the people that don't even know how grateful they are yet are really grateful for your work. So...
Thank you.
Really important.
I'm smiling under here. Yeah. Thank you. And I think, you know, especially these programs right now, they're very healing for children. It's a way they can communicate right now. We hear on our board meetings, we hear reports from teachers of, you know, some stories and how it's really affected kids, and it's therapeutic right now. It's amazing. It's more than ever. And that's wonderful for the kids. And in terms of telling the story, it's a complicated story. And, you know, we're on our second crop of parents coming in that don't understand what or why we have the YES Foundation, so we've tried really hard to tell that story. And the other day, I was with a parent who was a teacher in another district. She grew up in California. Her husband grew up in New York. She never received arts education and he didn't know that. She's, because in New York, you receive arts education for all public schools. But again, people don't know the story, and so she didn't have it. And so knowing that her children have it in the district here means the world to her because not everybody gets it in California, very few get it in California. So, it's great work. Yeah.
Great job.
Well, I will say that for Chelsea to take over as the executive director during the pandemic and to try to figure it all out, been doing an amazing job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I enjoy it. Thanks, Sam.
Good, yeah. We enjoyed having you.
Forward to hearing more. You have stuff to report to us, which is wonderful.
Come back.
Wonderful to connect with you. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to item number E, which are the presentation and action items that we have for this evening. And the first one is the introduction of Mr. Desmond McKissick.
I'm so glad that we get to have Des here tonight, and I'm going to let Chris do an introduction of him. But you did approve Des's hiring to join Ross Valley back in December and as our new Director of Maintenance and Operations. So, Chris, take it away.
Well, it is with great pleasure that I introduce Desmond McKissick. His actual name is Desmond, but he goes by Des. Des came to us at the beginning of December by replacing David Geman. And I'm going to read just a little bit. I don't normally do that, but I'm going to. Just so you understand a little bit more about Des before I turn to work. So he comes to us from the Marin Horizon School in Mill Valley. So he comes from a private school here in the county. And he served as the Director of Site and Transportation. So it's a little different term, but what really was the Director of Maintenance for the past seven years. And prior to that, he worked at the Mill Valley School District for a short period and was also at the John Swett Unified School District prior to that. And so he comes with a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of knowledge of our county. And it is with great pleasure and a lot of sweat that we introduced Des to the district.
Hey, welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks, Des.
So Des McKissick, take your mask off for just a quick second. Okay, there's Des.
Okay, welcome. Thank you so much.
And you will know Des the minute he starts speaking because Des is from New Zealand.
Ah, New Zealand.
So you will know when he speaks in the future.
Thanks for the introduction, Chris. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to keep this really brief. I just want to express my gratitude and excitement as being hired as the Director of Maintenance and Operations here. I'm energized by the challenges that lie ahead. And I look forward to not only maintaining, but improving our facilities and our campuses. These are challenging times, as you all well know. But thus far, I am super appreciative of the welcome that I've got here from everyone. Faculty staff and especially the administration here at the DO. It's made me very, very welcome. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And one additional thing regarding Des. Des started at the beginning of December and he was working hand in hand with Brett Joyner, our previous director. And Brett had actually known Des prior to him coming. He had met him when he was the director here through the County Office of Education. Despite Des coming from a private school, he was attending the director meetings at the County Office of Education. So Des has that wealth of knowledge. And one thing that Brett has told us is that we're in great hands, and I know we are.
Great. Thank you for that transition too. I think that was a great transition to bring you in, you know, and be able to kind of pass the baton with someone who'd been here for so long to come back as an intro. So that was orchestrated, hopeful, I mean, those were seeming, seems to be orchestrated seamlessly.
It was, yeah.
Get, help you, support you on your way forward. So thank you for being here.
All right, Des. Now your long day has ended.
Thank you. Carry on.
You can stay.
I want to.
Thank you, Des. Nice to meet you.
You can stay, yeah, true.
Next item, E2, is our recommended approval of the audit report for the 2020-2021 school year.
And that's going to be me as well initially. And I need to apologize to both Mr. Roach as well as to the governing board. I didn't realize that we put nameplates for everybody, including Mr. Roach. So, being new with the district in person,
Oh, yes.
I didn't realize that that was our practice, so I'm going to apologize. But with that said, I wanted to introduce Stephen Roach, who is the CPA that does our audit each year. And it's with great pleasure that I introduce him and he can fill the board in on our audit report.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to go through rather quickly. This information at this point is about six months old, so I kind of like to just highlight the things that I feel are important to board members. The report for the district, the independent auditor's report, is an unmodified opinion on the primary government, which is the Ross Valley School District. An unmodified opinion means that the financial statements contained within this report are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. It is the best opinion you can receive on the primary government report and the one you'd like to see each year when you receive your audit report. Next, I'm going to skip over all of the financial information. And basically, the reason why is, I don't know if you have the actual report in front of you or not, but there's a page in here where it basically identifies any changes that were made to the unaudited actuals that you approved back in September. This past year, there were no adjustments made as a result of the audit to those financial statement numbers. So it's exactly the same financial information that you looked at back in September and approved at that time. Also, since there were no changes, it's basically saying that the district provided me with information that did not need to be modified in order for it to be presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You typically don't want to see a lot of large adjustments or anything like that because it kind of loses this nice, warm, fuzzy feeling throughout the year if you're getting information that you can rely on or not. As far as the general fund, this past year, there was a significant increase in the fund balance of the general fund of over $1.5 million. A lot of that deals with the COVID-19 funding that came in. There's a lot of strange fluctuations in the past year versus prior years, but that's a large extent of it. At the end of June 30, 2021, your district ended the year with a 20.5% available reserve. For a district of your size, the state recommends a minimum of 3%. So you're well above that at June 30. As far as your long-term liabilities at June 30, there was approximately $88 million. Of that amount, approximately $58 million was related to general obligation bonds of the district. So that is all being financed by the local taxpayers within the district. The remaining $30 million is mostly made up of STIRS and PERS obligations as well as OPEB obligations related to your retiree health benefits. Those amounts, although they're rather large, it's basically for the STIRS and PERS is your proportionate share of the outstanding obligation that's not funded at the state level. So it's not like you say, hey, let's pay down that $30 million. It's basically just out there and you just have to know that it exists. Right now, you're making all of your required payments, so you're good to go as far there. The only concern that I really had at all within this district is the projected decrease in average daily attendance. And I'm not sure where you guys are at this point. Key thing on that is just want to make sure that you're aware of that. You're adjusting your budget going forward because you get in trouble rather quickly if you have a large layoff, you've got too many teachers on board or whatever the base might be.
Interject very briefly during the first interim process. We realized, working with the County Office of Education, that we're projected to go into basic aid status next year.
Next year because of the decrease. Okay, so that's a good thing on the one side is you're only going to drop a certain amount.
Yeah.
But it's still kind of a concern depending until you get to that level. Other than that, if I went to the very back of this report, basically, we had no findings to report this year for either financial statement findings, federal compliance, or state compliance findings. So that's very good. It's been very difficult the last two years. As you guys are aware, there have been numerous changes due to all of the reporting requirements where attendance was not required. However, you had to do significant changes to everything that you were recording as far as how you're tracking students. And I'm sure you're more than aware of all the different changes that took place on that. And your district did a very good job as far as gathering that information and making sure that they were keeping track of kids and complying. There could be some significant fiscal penalties if you were not doing that, but that was not an issue here. So... Other than that, in the prior year, there were no findings as well, so there's nothing to follow up on. So overall, I think it's a very positive report. It sounds like, like I said, the only issue was the declining enrollment in AD8 that I have concerns with.
So that sounds like a great report.
Sounds great.
Yeah, because the declining enrollment, it's not like you did anything wrong, Mr. Carson, right?
We didn't talk to anybody.
And we're all very aware of it, so it's not the thing that the auditor came in and stole.
And I just want to say it was a very smooth transition as well. This was our first year working with Chris.
Okay.
You know, we got along well. Everything was provided that we needed throughout the audit process and I think everything went very smoothly. So, this is building here now, so.
A lot of incompliances. I like that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it will be the same this year too.
Yeah.
It will be the same, although I'm sure you'll be in touch over the new, possibly new structuring with the community funded or basic aid instead of however that shows up in the way they audit, so.
Yeah. And once that happens, you have different things as far as cash flow that you have to be aware and stuff like that. But other than that, it's not that hard.
It's nice to be starting with a good foundation, clean audit rather than having leftover stuff from one structure that you have to weave into another one. So that's, thank you.
For RC2, I mean, just to be able to step into this position and being able to have that work and, you know, you being able to put this in here so that you can do what you do independently of you and you, and then just have it be transparent play is a great way for RC2. And also obviously shows someone knows what the heck they're doing. And because if not, you would not say the things you just said, pretty much. So, that's very nice.
What was nice for me stepping in, I didn't have any audit findings, major done a really good job.
Yep, having it complete, right?
Yeah.
And I want to say that it's, you're coming mid-January. I know of many other districts where the audit is actually still happening.
Yeah.
So, just of personal experience. So the fact that you are, we are here and the report is over and that's done, that's, trust me, this is in itself, this is really good. So, thank you both of you for, you know, having done the work properly and...
We need a motion on that.
Yes, except before we take a motion, is there anyone here who wants to make any public comment on this item? Got a couple people. No, okay. Just want to make sure we're doing, give an opportunity for any public comments since, especially since it is a voting item. But since we have no public comment, if there's any other...
I'll move approval of recommendation, the approval of the annual audit report for 2021 school year.
And I second.
We have a motion and a second, a dynamic duo over here on that. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one. Brian?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Shelley? Aye. Wesley?
Aye.
All right. Wow.
Thank you so much.
Very much.
Thank you so much.
We got three. All right. Onto item number three, which is also a discussion and voting item for recommended approval of AB 1200 disclosure for 2021-22 agreements with certificated employees. Where are we on this one? Chris, back to you.
That's going to be me.
Back to you, Chris.
So this is a required process. Many, many years ago, a district up here in the Bay Area got themselves in trouble for giving dollars that they could not afford long-term. And as a result of that, it was the, what used to be Richmond Unified School District, which is now West Contra Costa. And what came out of that is the requirement for AB 1200, which is that anytime there is an agreement with a bargaining unit, you have to provide notice to the County Office of Education of what does, what that is in that agreement in terms of dollars, any language changes, et cetera. You need to provide them copies of it. And then you have to break down what the costs look like in terms of your budget. And so, when you do that, you have to provide the County Office of Education a minimum of 10 days' notice so that they can have a comment period. And the reason for that is that as they look at those costs, if they don't feel that you can afford it, they will make a comment on it and give it to you and tell you that you would need to make budget cuts in order to adhere to the budget. And so with that, we provided a copy of this to the County Office of Education on December 17. And so they've had plenty of time to look at it. And I know that they were in fact looking at it because they were asking some questions on it, as they always do, last week. We have not received anything from them, and so that's a good sign. What I anticipate getting is when I put together the second interim budget report, I expect to see something written into the comments at that time, which is kind of what I've seen in this county from the past. And so with this, there are several sections of the AB 1200. The very first page is a required page that the superintendent and the chief business official both must sign off and say that we can afford this. And it's not just in the current year, it's in the multi-year. So we're looking at the current year plus two additional years. And so I did provide the information and both RC and I have signed it. And we've broken down the costs, both in terms of the salaries as well as the statutory benefits and the health and welfare costs within the multi-year projections and show that we can afford it within our multi-year projections. And so with that, we would ask that you just approve this as the precursor to the actual agreement with the Ross Valley Teachers Association.
Which will be the next agenda item.
Yeah, so I'm actually booked. That is, and I think I don't have any questions. Is there any question or...
I don't have any questions. That's very clear explanation, given that this is a precursor to the real need that they go together, so.
So it's going to make a motion to approve the AB 1200.
Let's do public comment.
Oh, sorry, yes. No, no public comment. Thank you. So, good. It's time I'm going to make a motion to approve the AB 1200 disclosure for 2021-22 agreement with certificated employees.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. The motion passes and we've approved the disclosure. The motion passes and we've approved the disclosure. So now let's move on to the recommended approval of what we were disclosing, which is the twenty twenty one, twenty two tentative agreement between the Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees and the Teachers Association. I'm going to assume this is back.
No, that'll be mine.
Oh, great.
So very pleased that we were able to settle negotiations for the current school year, two thousand twenty one, twenty two, with our teachers' union, very happy. So it's all certificated employees within the unit. And so that we settled on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. And what we agreed to was a three percent on-schedule salary increase and a three thousand dollar off-schedule one-time payment that is prorated for any employees in the unit who are less than full-time. So it's prorated amount, but it's a three thousand one-time up sum. And then under health and welfare, we agreed to the increase in the health and welfare cost to the Kaiser and Delta Dental employee only. And as you may recall, there was no increase for the twenty one, twenty two school year related to Delta Dental, but there was an increase to Kaiser. And so their benefits are continued to be paid at the employee rate for Delta Dental and Kaiser. And then we also agreed that this would be a three-year settlement. So we had no other contractual language items or any other elements of the bargaining agreement. So our contract has been approved and agreed upon through June thirty of two thousand twenty four. And of course, our regular openers that we can have every year, which are the wages articles, articles of wages, health and welfare benefits, and up to two additional other articles of either party's choice. So no change in language there, that's been in our contract for a very, very, very long time. But when your contract is usually up for a full revisit, we agreed that neither side had any other language articles or any other elements of the contract to talk about. And so given that COVID and the added pressures and work upon everybody, that we could reach a three-year agreement. So it may be confusing for some because knowing that your health and welfare you're settling for this year, but your agreement's for three, that's why in the completion of agreements section, it always says what you can annually open. And so with that, we're very pleased to have settled negotiations with our VTA. And it's always, it's a fabulous working relationship. And we may have differences, but we always come to reaching agreement without any difficulties on either side. So it's really working through and talking together and staying in communication. So thank you and really happy for, for that, and especially for our employees. And I know, well, actually, I think Karen, if you want to say the appreciation, that membership, yes, I'd let you take that part.
Yes, it's, as everyone knows, it's been really challenging the last couple of years. And the fact that there hadn't been an increase in the twenty twenty one year. It was just such a wonderful way to go into the winter break, knowing this was settled and that we had an agree, we had an agreement that people were really happy about. So it was really a positive way to end twenty twenty one. And we did have to explain to members about the, that we could open. We had some members confused about the three-year. They said, wait, we're not going to get anything for another year, so we're going to take a breath. It's all, we're all good. So that is confusing for people. So Marcy, thank you for pointing that out because it is something that does confuse people, but we're just so grateful. So thank you so much for working with us. And as I'm going to echo what Marcy says, it's a really collaborative working environment and we just really have good conversations. And it's really nice to be in a place where it's not contentious and we get along and come to agreements. And it's really, really grateful for that relationship. So because we know it's not like that in a lot of places. And so it's really something that we treasure and hope to maintain. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, Karen, are there any questions related to that?
Does anybody have any questions or any other? I just wanted to echo, sitting up here and, you know, being, sitting up here and hearing all of the other communities across the country, really, that have had just such difficult times during COVID and just really appreciating both of the administration and how you guys all are working together and from what we see in that terms of working relationship is hugely, hugely appreciated. And I know it also has a huge impact on the students and our families because it allows you to then cooperatively pay attention to what's important, which is their education, and not be detracting from that and spending a whole lot of time having to deal with a bunch of other stuff and really collaboratively focusing back in on that, so thank you.
Well, I think that's just a testament to trust and transparency.
Yeah.
Because which is the only way to do public service, as far as I'm concerned, because it just makes the bumps a lot less. And when you have trust and transparency, the collaborative aspect really steps in. So that's, that's a, that's a nod to you and your administration, too.
And, and to add on the whole other, you know, issue of having the conversation about this moving into basic aid at the eleventh hour, that we were all, you know, working through and that, that because of the trust and transparency and the conversations, that you're able to move through that as well in part of this. So just huge, big appreciations all the way. Wow, with a lot of you. Who says what? Yeah, exactly.
So if.
All right, we, we don't have anyone else in the audience for any other public comment, so we can, unless there's any other questions, we can go ahead and approve this.
I'll recommend approval.
And I second.
All right, we have an approval and a second, and we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Right?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Shelley, aye? Wesley?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. Really happy to move through that and to approve that. All right, our last item for the, for the presentation, item number five, is as we talked about, coming back to our very lengthy conversation at our last board meeting about this topic of community funded basic aid. And tonight really is about questions and outstanding issues, not necessarily so much about having answers. But because there was so much complexity to it last time, the idea was to just, the next first step was to come back and synthesize and make sure we have all the questions on the table and know what to, know what we don't know before we find out knowing it. So appreciate the work that continues to go into this and will help us and the rest of the community understand this complex issue that is ever evolving, again, with the governor's budget that just came out today, so. Chris, you want to?
Well, I was just going to go to the next slide. This is, I put Marcy's name on this as well because she, she plays a major role in this as well. Again, we wanted to bring back to the governing board and to the public just kind of a discussion about those, about the basic aid and community funded status. What are the questions that are coming up? And also start to look at what some of those answers are. But with the knowledge that we are still continuing down the path of learning, and so we'll be continuing to learn, and it may be another year or two before we know all of the answers because you have to kind of live the circumstances to know some of the answers. But that's really the purpose of this, this evening. And so as we look at it, I just wanted to reiterate kind of why we got to the point that we're at. And it started out with our, our June budget adoption for the current fiscal year. And it is always a multi-year projection, which includes the twenty one, twenty two year, the twenty two, twenty three, and the twenty three, twenty four. And at that particular time, the county office of education also provides information on it. And when looking at their calculator, it did not show that we would be entering basic aid status in the twenty two, twenty three, and twenty three, twenty four year. When we received the initial calculator for our first interim budget in mid-November, which is, the first interim budget is the one we just approved in December, it, they were telling us at that point that, that we did reach community funded basic aid status for twenty two, twenty three. And so we started looking at it and asking questions. And about the beginning of December, we realized that they had omitted some major information, including in lieu property taxes. And so it, it was a process of trying to then finalize closing, or not closing the books, but closing out for the first interim budget. As, as we were going through it, there were some questions, both that staff and the governing board had. Some of the questions are things such as, you know, what, what does it mean? What triggered this? And also, as a community funded district, will RVSD have a lot more funding than in the past? And so I wanted to be able to answer some of these questions as we, as we go. As you will recall from our April twenty second board meeting, as well as this, the December board meeting, both from our presentation as well as the county office of education, as you start looking at your revenues, your, your first thing that you have to look at is your average daily attendance, which is based upon your enrollment and kids that actually come to school. As you calculate out what your revenues are for those kids that come, they call that your local control funding formula, your LCFF revenues. And so you take that total revenue and then they start to give you your property taxes. If you have an excess of your property taxes, it overflows and you get to keep it. And that is the bottom portion, and that would push you up to community funded status. If you're short, the state makes up and backfills that amount and to get you up to that total LCFF, and that's called state aid. And so in our situation, our property taxes would exceed the amount of LCFF revenues. And so that's what, what happened in terms of our, our LCFF and our community funded status, that's what causes it. And the true cause of it, as we were looking, there's multiple causes. One, our property tax base has grown tremendously over the last few years. But then we've also seen a decrease in our total enrollment and attendance as a result of the pandemic. And it's not just the Ross Valley School District, it's a number of districts. So that's really what got us to this point. Then the other question had to do with, you know, is it a lot more money? And so as you look at it, this particular slide was something that we had shown last time as well. The green would be our twenty two, twenty three, and twenty three, twenty four years if we were just at state aid. And when looking at the community funded status at our December board meeting, you can see that the blue particular columns, these are actually as a result of getting additional funds for your property taxes. And so what you do notice is that despite us going up, we do have a little bit more money, but you still see the decrease in our total revenues. And that has to do with, in year three, the twenty three, twenty four year, you start to have to pay your in lieu property taxes and you also lose your supplemental taxes. And so you do see the drop in your, your tax base because of that. And so despite us having, going, moving into community funded status, it still is a drop in our, our total revenues year over year. So it doesn't, it doesn't eliminate the issues, it just makes them less.
Cushions.
Cushions.
Yeah.
And so you can also see that, if you look at this particular slide, if you look at where the red circles are, to the left, it's the twenty one, twenty two year, twenty two, twenty three is the middle, and twenty three, twenty four is the, the one to the right. And you see, we go from seventeen point four million to seventeen point three million, and then we drop all the way down to fifteen point eight million. So even though we are going in, in entering basic aid, community funded status, it's not a, it's not a massive windfall to the district. It is more money than we would be receiving under LCFF state aid, but it's, it's still a decrease in our total revenues. As we moved forward into some additional questions, if RVSD no longer receives funding based on the number of students enrolled, because we'd be receiving it just based on our property taxes, will the district continue to enroll non-resident students on a space available basis? What will happen to RVSD revenues if enrollment increases? And what does it mean to be deep in community funded status? As you look at that, that, that first question is really not one that we can answer today. That's something that we would have to take a look at, all of the needs of the district in terms of space, programs, et cetera. And we would take a look at what our, our, our policies and procedures are. And then be coming back with a recommendation to the governing board. And the governing board will also make determinations on that.
And I think one of the, you know, the differences and why this, I think, has come up as a question because when you are a revenue limit or an LCFF district, for every student you have enrolled and attending our schools, we get money for each of those students. But now moving into when you're community funded, you no longer get a per pupil amount. And so we really have to take a look at the, what the impact is to the district and could we continue to accommodate? I don't envision, and I, at least as of right now, would never recommend that any students who are currently here would not be able to remain. They would be able to continue through their eighth grade year. But for any new students, it may be new students who are non-Ross Valley School District resident students, may not be able to approve those. Because part of that, I think, getting to that question, and we'll, Chris will cover it a little bit more, but that question about being deep into community funded enrollment does make a difference as to your status in community funded. So it's, there's a lot of factors and a lot of considerations around, around that. So I think I kind of covered the, what will happen to RVSD's revenue if enrollment increases? As long as we're in basic aid, nothing, because you do not get a per pupil amount, so. And then do you want to talk about deep into basic aid, or do you have any questions at this point? Any further questions around?
There is a point, though, at which if your enrollment increases to a certain extent, given that, and this might go to your deep basic aid versus teetering and flip-flopping when you're on that cusp, that if your enrollment increases to a certain amount, then you would flip back into the per student funding scenario. Which, and then my question is, it is true that transfer students count towards that enrollment increase, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Got it. Okay, so, I mean, again, we noted that you flip back and forth, it could be by five dollars. So if it's a difference of one transfer student that flips, I mean, those, it's, it can be tricky.
That close.
It could be that close.
If you are, if you are deep, if you are deep in, in community funded, then you don't have that, how many keys you flip flop, right?
You're not flip-flopping or at risk of flip-flopping, so.
Yeah, deep, deep in community funding districts, what that term really means is that you have so much property tax revenues that it would take a large fluctuation in either your attendance or the cost of living adjustment from the state on the LCFF revenues to, to throw you out of community funded, to the point that you probably will never come back out.
Right.
And so we're not at that point at this particular juncture. We're at the point where we would be teetering in and out potentially. But going to question E, what will happen to revenues if enrollment increases? There, when looking at basic aid or state aid funding, it's basically a comparison. So you first do your calculation for your LCFF. So you're looking at your attendance and multiplying it times your cost of living and what that factor is for your attendance and getting a, a number. And that number is your total LCFF revenues. You then compare that to what your property tax base is. And if your property tax base exceeds that amount, then you are a community funded district. And so if your enrollment increases, that will change that factor and it could throw you, it could cause you to teeter in and out of, of community funded status. So changes in enrollment could have a negative impact upon the district.
Do you remember who the other districts were that had been teetering in the county?
Recently, some of the teeter districts, there, there were two, it was Larkspur, and also Miller Creek.
Okay.
But my understanding is that at least Miller Creek is now fairly deep in. I'm talking to Caitlin this afternoon. And that has to do with them also receiving large. And that has to do with them also receiving large drops in their enrollment as a result of the pandemic as well.
Thank you, Sam.
So.
Okay.
So then as we move along, some other questions. How will the charter school impact RVSD's revenues as a community-funded district? If RVSD has a community-funded district, is, if we're responsible for transferring funds to RBC only for the in-district resident students who attend the charter, how will RVSD verify the charters in-district resident students? And then this other question, Caitlin, the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services with the Marin County Office of Ed, when she was here in December, she stated that RBC would probably, Ross Valley Charter would probably extend to the Ross Valley School District the same payments offering as what has been offered to other districts in the county. And that has to do with the payment of the in-lit property taxes. And that agreement currently allows them to not have to pay those in-lit property taxes until they've been given all of their attendance and they can verify it at which point they would pay the entire amount. So in addition, the charter must follow each district's residency requirements according to Kate. And so how likely are these to happen? So wanted to talk a little bit about that.
Can I just make sure, clarify, on, on the slide where you have the green bars and the blue bars in terms of the property taxes? I think you had mentioned that the blue bar, the property taxes, with respect to this question of how much is paid out. That blue bar is total property taxes minus the payout to, that's where that, that's where that would show up in the horse race between, I just wanted to reiterate that, again, if that goes up to a certain amount, where that whole community-funded bar would be lower, then we would, that would be another reason why we would go back to the LCFF per student structure.
That is correct.
Okay.
And you can actually see that when looking at the 22, 23 versus 23, 24. You actually see the drop. And the reason for that drop is, in the first year of entering community-funded, basic aid status, you, you do not pay the in-lit property taxes. You don't pay them until year two. And so 23, 24 is year two. And so we are paying out at that particular time, a little over a million dollars is our estimate, based upon the P2 data, which is the measure of attendance in April, April 15th of each year, by April 15th. And so that, that's our preliminary data that we have right now for the charter.
So that's a variable going forward, what that actually ends up being affects the size of that blue. Okay.
And that's why, too, it's recommended, because as Steve mentioned when he was here doing our audit report earlier this evening, why he, he did comment on our, our reserves amount. But as we have learned through our studies so far, is that districts that are in basic aid should maintain a much higher level of reserve, and especially districts in our case, in which we would be a teeter or flip-flopping in and out. Because if you don't start paying those taxes in that, sorry, the in-lit property taxes until the second year, the year after you enter into, then what happens is, as it's projected right now, that's a year that we won't be in basic aid. So we'll have a double hit, in which we have to reserve and save that money that has to be paid that following year from the previous year's determination of our in-lit property taxes. So if we go in and out of basic aid, it's going to be that, yeah, it's, it's going to be, so Chris will be sharpening his pencil and systems.
It's definitely a complicated cash flow, right?
Very, very complicated.
It's really the cash flow that's complicated.
Yeah. And reserve, as you said, because one year, you've got more than you are paying out and you have to hold that aside because the next year, you have to pay it out, but you won't, you're getting it in again, because the follow-up third year, you're going to flip back into the, you get it in, but you're not paying it out. And if you go back and forth, wow.
And I wanted to touch back on something Mercy just mentioned, she kind of stole the thunder.
Is what?
You stole the thunder.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Okay, we can ignore, we were not paying attention.
Real quick, the governor came out with his budget proposal for 22, 23 yesterday. And one of the factors that you have to take a look at is what is the cost of living adjustment on the LCFF?
Yes.
And that is 5.33%. And so when we plug that into our LCFF calculator for 22, 23, it does drop us out of community aid, basic, community aid, basic aid status for 23, 24.
Oh, does it still keep us in on 22, 23?
Correct. So we would still be in 22, 23, but we would come out in 23, 24. And so we're doing this teeter already.
Right, and we haven't started.
We're looking at other factors and, and we might, we could, when everything settles out, we might still be in community aid status in 23, 24. But if we are, it's going to be by the hair of our chinny-chin-chin. It's going to be really close.
And the only reason why it sounds like we would be in the community aid, basic aid funding in 22, 23 is because we're not having to pay it out. Had, had the cash, had the cash in and the cash out coincided in the same year, then that blue bar would be lower than the green bar, in which case we wouldn't, which is super weird that you go into it simply cash flow problem-wise, not actual.
Yes.
That's, which is, I think, you know, one of the things that Kate mentioned at the December meeting, and that question I, is around what the Ross Valley Charter School's done with other districts that are basic aid because of the way that, that MOU to allow to be paid at a different schedule than we would typically have to pay. And that's because when you're LCFF-funded, you get your money into the district from the state on a monthly basis. But when you are community-funded or basic aid, you receive those property tax payments twice a year, roughly. And so it becomes a cash flow issue, given that you would have to pay out monthly, but you don't receive the funding in. So as we talked about in December, it is where districts oftentimes have to take out a loan if they are not able to pay that. So then you have interest and all the others that, I mean, the only good news is there would be local county loans that we could get that would be very low, but it's still extra dollars that the district would expend for having to take out a loan.
Would, would you run the time horizon out farther than the 23, 24? Because if there is this.
We will be, as soon as we start, when we adopt our budget for 22, 23, we'll extend it one more year. But we actually start looking at it internally, that's at second year. It just isn't reported out to the, to the general public. So we do start looking at it, so.
Because that might be something we want to look at earlier than rather than later, because if it is literally going to be year after year, simply because one year you get the money in, but you don't pay it out, the next year you pay it out, but you're not going to get the money in. The next year, you're going to get it in, but you're not going to, I mean, there's the cash flow over, over the months.
Period.
Year, but there's also this cash flow over years within five to 10-year spread that also oscillates. So you've got these micro-oscillations during the year and these macro-oscillations from year to year.
And, and when you saw the, the drop in revenue between 22, 23 and 23, 24, while still in basic aid status, you don't see that drop as extensive if you're in, if you start to, to remain in, in teetered back and forth because you're not paying out all of those fees. You're still getting, for example, your, your supplemental taxes, so you might have a little bit more money there. And that, that makes it more challenging when looking at negotiations. It's difficult to.
Fair enough. Yes, you're right.
It, it does make it difficult for everybody.
So there, so there are other things that you lose and gain when you're in one and out of one that even oscillate it further.
Yes.
Because one year you're in, you don't have those. The next year, you're back out and you do have them. And do those items have a, and these guys don't have a recompensation thing like?
No. So when looking at it, if, if in year three, I'm no longer in basic aid status, I will still have to pay the in-lit property taxes to the charter. However, I will just get more money in state aid from the state. So, I mean, it becomes a cash flow issue, but there's other things.
Okay.
So kind of going back to the, those initial questions, this particular slide, I wanted to show this. This is from the CDE website. And this is a chart that shows who has to pay for the in-lit property taxes. And so really, if you look at that third one, it says Regular Charter School SPE, which is State Board of Education, so that the State Board of Education has authorized it. And if you go down to the very bottom, it says includes charters approved by SPE with oversight responsibilities delegated to the district or county office of ed. That fits Ross Valley because, Ross Valley Charter, because it's been delegated to the county office of ed. And as you move all the way to the right, it says District of Residence in Basic Aid in prior year. So what that tells you is that the Ross Valley School District will pay Ross Valley Charter in-lit property taxes for our children, kids, the second year of our, of being in basic aid.
And, and we have on our questions to confirm this in actual, like, because then there's the, what happens when they go for renewal? I mean, there's the long-term question of, they were SPE this time, and we'll have to confirm that, too.
Yes, because there's some other things in there, like the one right above it. If the County Office of Education is the charter authorizer. If you go to the right, it says District that denied the charter school. So it's possible, if, how it's interpreted, that if at renewal, they come to us and we deny it, we would be liable for every district's.
Well, we also have to find out that they don't, I mean, my understanding is that from here forward, they go to the County Office of Education, they don't. But, but again, I think we definitely need to have all of this reconfirmed, because again, our understanding was that the county was now the authorizer and if you go back to your authorizer, not, they would never come back to us. But we should just put that as a to-do. Yeah, it's helpful to have this, thank you for adding that.
Yeah, it's a good table.
Yeah.
So kind of going back to the question in terms of how does it impact us, the green circle in year three is the in-lit property taxes, which, kind of going back to your point, when looking at that chart, you see the, the blue, the blue and green chart. You see the drop in revenues and property taxes between 22, 23 and 23, 24. That's directly as a result of us paying those in-lit property taxes.
Got it. Yep.
The other thing that I think is important to note is, just kind of going back to the Caitlin question, would they extend to, would they, the Ross Valley Charter extend to the Ross Valley School District the same contract in terms of payment of the in-lit property taxes? And I think it's important to understand what the attendance at P2 from April of last year looks like. And so when this is.
Where did you get this data?
This is from the CDE website.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And so this breaks down the ADA by school district for the Ross Valley. So if you look, and it's here where it says ADA not subject to in-lit property taxes, these are districts that are state aid funded. And this, the next column, ADA subject to in-lit property tax transfers, these are basic aid districts. So state aid, basic aid. And it's important to note that right now, they've only got 21.3 ADA that are community-funded district ADA. That does not include the Ross Valley School District ADA, which is 122.2, but their total 193.4 ADA, which is over 60% of their total allocation. So if they were to extend that same contract to the Ross Valley School District, they would then have a massive cash flow issue themselves. And it, I think it would be pretty unlikely that they would want to do that. In particular, when looking at what that payment schedule would look like.
Can we, can we go back to that last slide? Why do we have fractions of ADA? Explain that again.
So as you do, that's a great question. As you do your calculation, so you might have a student that misses days. And so if you miss a few days, you're less than one in ADA. And so that's why you end up with the fractions.
Since it's attendance.
It's based upon the attendance reports that have been provided to the California Department of Education from the charter.
Correct. So this would be our P2 attendance report, which is the last full month prior to April 15th of every year. And so it's due right around the, the end of April.
Okay, thanks.
One question on here had to do, had to do with, how will RVSD verify the charters and district resident students was one question that came up.
Yes.
And currently, for all of the non-basic aid schools, that, that is being paid for by the state of, I mean, the money is coming from the state of California because these districts are not collecting the property taxes and then doing the in-lit. So is it our understanding, then, that the California State Board of Education has been confirming the residency of these non-basic aid district students? Or do we know, is that part of that question of?
That they would not be, it would just be part of the normal audit process that the auditor would go through and verify that, that the district is, or that charter school is ensuring they have proper documentation.
Okay.
And then in terms of the others, the Ross Valley Charter is providing to the basic aid districts a list of, of the students with, so that the, the districts can verify that they are in fact a student that would reside within their area.
Thank you.
This looks at what the payment schedule would look like for the Ross Valley School District to the Ross Valley Charter for the in-lit property taxes. And it's always based upon the P2 attendance. So we would start based upon prior year attendance and we would just start paying them. It's a bigger deal when you have really small amounts of ADA. If you've only got one or two ADA, if a student leaves, that's a massive thing. When you're dealing with 122 ADA, pluses or minuses of a couple of kids isn't going to make a big difference. And so that's why they have this payment schedule. And so as you can see, we'll be paying out portions during times that we do not have dollars in terms of the property taxes, because we receive our, our property taxes primarily in December and April. So again, I think it's highly unlikely that they would probably extend that to us.
And, and as you mentioned, just clarifying, you mentioned this was, that it's based on the P2 attendance from the prior year. So that would mean, to start out with. So that would mean that the payments start in the 23, 24 school year, based on the 22, 23 P2 attendance.
And then there's a true-up period as we get to the end of the year and you finalize it at the end of the year.
And it's, okay.
And they would only be paid based upon their current year P2 as a total, but you've been paying all along based on prior year. So you just have that true-up period, which happens in, in the final, which happened in July of '24.
And included for us?
Yep.
Yep.
I know, it's, it's complex.
No, I got it.
No, I just, I find, I'm still, it's just math. I'm still finding the whole, you flip into basic aid because you're not having to make this payment, but by the time you have to make this payment, you're no longer in basic aid. The logic of that just is, it's hard to grasp, that the state created that formula.
Thank you.
And also to think about, you know, when we have heard over in different venues, like the, the money follows the children, and it doesn't really. In a lot of ways, it doesn't, or at least not in real time.
Yeah, certainly not in real time. Like, it follows a kid the next year.
Yeah.
But that, but it's not used as the calcu, it's the whole thing that it's not used as the calculation to decide whether you're even, because when you're on that teeter, it seems like it makes a big difference. It, it, it's literally the difference, as we see in the 23, 24, the real difference, whether we're in or out, has to do whether we make this payment or not. And so the fact that we're not, that that's not calculated for the first year, which, if that's really the only re, I mean, when I look at those bars, those are very helpful. The only reason that we flip into basic aid is because we're not making that in-lit payment. And as soon as we start making those payments, we flip back out. Anyhow. Your math. Math and logic don't always match, so keep going.
There's no math when you're in seventh or eighth grade.
Yeah, thank you, sorry.
Some of the additional questions.
Yeah.
What are the impacts in the LCFF calculator based on any changes in the COLA or above items interrelated with average daily attendance? What is the impact of changes in total property taxes? Impacts of changes in property tax percentage in relation to COLA and ADA? How does the elimination of supplemental tax revenues in year two impact revenues? How does RBSD switch from state subsidized to community-funded structure impact the excess ERAF calculations? Since there would be fewer districts and under students in the ERAF calculation?
Yes. So, flipping in and out has impacts on ERAF as well?
Correct. But, but, kind of going to that question, if you are a community aid-funded district, you do not have a ERAF deduct. And so, us going in negatively impacts the two remaining districts that are state aid, which are Nevada Unified and San Rafael Elementary.
That's right.
And so, those two would have a higher amount of ERAF. And so, conversely, if we flip back in, we would have ERAF, and they would have less.
Yeah. So, their fate is tied to our fate.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Wow.
And their budgeting is tied to our budget. Our budgeting is tied to Ross Valley Charter's enrollment.
Correct.
Wow.
So, their fate is tied to the Ross Valley Charter. If A equals B and B equals C, then A equals C, so.
That's correct. And just to, just to show how complex this gets, I just got an adjustment to these funds for our unaudited actuals that we just completed. I literally got an email last week about it, so it'll make a, that might be a change. Doesn't affect our total revenues, it's, it's a cash flow thing for us. But, it's, it's something that happens late.
Oh, indeed, yeah.
One other, I see the word supplemental in here, and it's reminding me that in our calculations of the inland taxes, I know we're not a concentration grant district, but there is the unduplicated pupil count supplemental amount. That is part of the inland transfer, it's not just the, correct or not correct? There's a supplemental depending on whether each student is a unduplicated pupil, EL, foster homeless, socio-economically disadvantaged student, and that those elements add a certain amount more.
The way I understand it is they get transferred basically based upon our total property taxes divided by our total average daily attendance. So, you get kind of a, and you add in theirs as well. So, there's like a factor that you have for your property taxes that you then shift over to them based upon their attendance. So, it doesn't really cover that. That's part of their equation, is the way I understand it, but that's certainly something we'll take a look at.
We should, we should definitely add that on to this, because I think I had heard from our legal counsel when she was here last time, that actually, the transfer is the LCFF calculation, not the property tax calculation.
What I've seen is it's based upon property taxes.
So, we should just add that to, add that as a clarifying?
Yeah, and I'm fairly certain of that, because when you look at the actual calculations of the transfers that I've seen, Neymar County, and actually, is it listed?
Maybe here?
Yeah, maybe on this. It is. So, if you look at the numbers to the right, inland property taxes transfer rate for ADA.
Yeah.
You see that they vary based upon the district. And if it was based upon, strictly based upon the LCFF calculator, I don't think you would see five thousand six hundred and twenty-two, because the LCFF calculation is excessive of that. So, perhaps I'm mistaken, but.
Whoa, whoa. You got a good mark with us, no mistakes.
We should just, we should just.
It's definitely something that, that we'll look at, but that's, this is part of the reason I'm thinking that. And again, this is from the CDE website.
That's definitely interesting.
I know I brought this up before, but how, how are we able to really check the numbers that are submitted by the charter school?
We would have to go through the, the list of students and their addresses and verify their, that they, that they're within our boundaries.
Yeah, how are we able to do that? Is there a mechanism in place to do that?
That's actually a good question, and I think that's one that I have that we'll get back on.
Great.
Because we still need to take a look at that.
Well, as we see, there's a lot of other things that are on that number.
Yeah.
And a lot of other districts, and a lot of people, and there's a lot of effects, so that would be interesting to make sure. For all the reasons mentioned, it's valid.
Yeah. So, kind of answering some of these questions, if you look at J and K both directly, one has to do with the LCFF calculator and COLA, and the other has to do with average daily attendance. So, going back to the LCFF calculator, when you're calculating your LCFF revenues, those, those two figures, as they fluctuate, greatly impact your total LCFF revenue. So, that can positively or negatively impact you as they relate directly to being in basic aid status. Then, as you start to look at your total property taxes, that's, and the, the percent of property taxes, the increase in property taxes in relation to the COLA, those all, those all go into those comparisons. So, if your property tax increases are greater than your cost of living increases, then generally, as long as your attendance is flat, your, your property taxes will be deeper and deeper in basic aid status.
Deeper.
But, as you look at it, if your enrollment and attendance starts to increase, it can vastly change. In terms of how does the elimination of supplemental tax revenues in year two of the community-funded status impact total revenues? Keep doing that, keep trying to do it on my computer, and it's right here. One of the things that you will note is that on here, you see that the total property taxes, if you look at the red circle in the middle, and the red circle to the right, those are seventeen point three and fifteen point eight. Those are your total LCFF revenues. But, if you look at the numbers directly below, you have the, the property tax increase as a percentage in your property taxes. You see that we have fifteen point four million, and then it drops to fourteen point nine million in twenty-three, twenty-four. That drop is a direct result of the supplemental taxes being pulled out here. So, as your supplemental taxes get pulled out in the second year of being community aid-funded status, your property taxes also drop, so that answers that question. That's what happens there. Like, see if it was more. Kind of switching from state subsidized to community-funded structure, have the excess ERAF, we answered that question. What you look here are some that, some of the questions that are in red and gold. And I've done that intentionally, because I don't have answers to these at this particular. It's something that we'll have to look into, which are, with RBSD moving to community-funded status with a current lawsuit between CSBA and the state controller regarding excess ERAF funds, do it impact us? I don't, I don't know how that will impact us, if any. But, we'll, we'll take a look at that further. How do community tax-funded districts prepare for the fiscal impact of the inevitable enrollment fluctuations in property tax revenue fluctuations over time to maintain fiscal stability over the long term? That's something that we'll have to look at.
Thank you.
And, and see as we kind of go along. But, one of the ways to be able to help address that is what Marcy was talking about earlier, that most districts that are in community aid status generally have larger fund balances, and that's part of the reason that those reserves are really important to help with those fluctuations.
Maintain your reserve, yeah.
Other than enrollment, are there any other factors that can impact our ability to remain community-funded district? How does the addition of inland property tax payments, any charter schools in year two, the community-funded status, impact revenues? How will the governor's twenty-two, twenty-three budget proposal, the five point three-three percent COLA impact community-funded status? We've answered all those questions as we've gone along today.
The other, speaking of the governor's budget, what is today? Tomorrow at ten o'clock, the Education Committee is hearing SB three, which is a proposal to change the LCFF calculation for either a three-year average or the higher of others. So, that may be another, that'll be another dial to keep an eye on, is if that does pass through, it may change the horse race on the LCFF too, besides just the COLA.
And I was going to mention that in closing.
I was like, sorry.
Not enough that particular, but that they hadn't put anything about that within the governor's budget proposal. It was silent on that.
Yes, it was silent on that. So, we'll find out more tomorrow after the education hearing committee.
So, this was just kind of going back to these questions. The next, and these are the final questions. What are the timelines for inland property tax payments, which we already showed? What are the impacts upon LCFF revenues and cash flows should the district teeter in and out of the community-funded status due to factors listed above? We'll have to get back into that more, because it depends on what, what factors change, how that impacts our cash flow. So, it's really specific to each circumstance, though that's kind of, as it comes, we'll be able to answer that. If cash flow is impacted by inland property tax payments, does this mean RBSD will incur additional costs by having to get a short-term loan? Marcy was talking about that earlier as well. We would have to go through, we get those short-term loans from the county and Marin. And will, which charters will RBSD be responsible for providing inland property taxes? That's, it really depends on, are there any other charters that will be moving into our area? Right now, it's, it's only RVC as we know, and as we know today, but that could change. And how do we verify student residency to confirm RBSD is not paying for other district students? And that goes to Brian's question. And we will have to take a wait-and-see approach on that as we start to dig into that a little bit further as well.
And also, I think a follow-up question to that is if it is determined that a, say, you know, a student does not reside within our district boundaries, but as we've seen from what Chris has provided, it's based on the P two and the state does the calculation, then is that where you have to, to whom do you make the determination and the request, if you will, to give the district back money that it paid when it shouldn't have? So, that whole mechanism of how does it work if you learn that a student was not actually residing?
Yeah.
I don't know if it happens at the front end, or if it happens, you have to pay it, and then you get the money credited back, not quite sure how it works.
And that's an excellent point, because once they certify that data, the, the state is assuming that we're paying it. So.
Along, along those lines, in terms of the mechanism and the time it takes and the whatever, whatever that's going to unfold and look like, is, is making sure that we're also understanding maybe what I would call the soft costs of this situation that we're in, both in terms of your time for this constant, if we're going to teeter in and out of recalculating with all of these multitudinous factors and the amount of budgeting, additional budgeting time that that's going to cost, you know, basically cost us the time cost, plus the verification cost time, I mean, that's going to take time to do. So, there's, in addition to the financial implications that you've laid out incredibly clearly here, there are other time costs and soft costs that I think we should need to be aware of and be tracking to make sure that we're aware of those. Certainly to the community.
Are you thinking that we would be billing for those services?
I, I, I don't know who we would bill for those services, but I do think just to, to know and to be aware that it's, it's taking staff time to be teetering in and out and to understand what's causing, you know.
It's a reasonable risk or analysis to find out what the costs are associated with that, for sure.
And, and again, going back to the money follows the kid, yes, and there are costs associated that are not recoverable in many circumstances, when the money flows out, that you have, in some cases, fixed costs, but then you also have even more costs that does not get recovered anywhere. So, understanding what that is, I think is going to be important.
Yeah. Chris, what was your memory from this, Ms. Lane's presentation on what other boards are doing in terms of their reserve? What was the percentage? Were it ten percent, but I can't remember the number she was throwing out.
I don't think she really threw out percentages, but I know that Reed has a, a reserve percentage somewhere in the neighborhood of what ours is.
Currently, what it actually is.
Yeah.
In this.
I thought I heard her say it was more than ten percent.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and in the twenties.
They are.
In what, in the twenties, yeah.
Yeah. So, one of the questions that I didn't see on the list is, what should the reserve be? When do we need to start building that reserve? Because we're going to have to create a new board policy on what the reserve is. And in terms of how you categorize that for accountancy purposes, what is, what is the reserve considered? I mean, is, is it, are they, how do you account for them on the balance sheet?
It's, it's the equivalent of like retained earnings in the private sector.
Yeah.
So, it's more or less like a savings account, if it's set aside as.
So, if, if our, if our board reserve changes, that doesn't change some of these, I wouldn't think it would change this, this graph here.
No, no.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, it doesn't touch the revenue side, it's only on the balance sheet side in terms of how much money we, we set aside there. And I do know that some of the documents that Marcy and I have looked at, they do talk about exactly what your questions are.
Yeah.
Kind of the process, what that would look like. And I think I even, I think I pulled that off of the Reed website.
That's where, uh-huh. And that was very helpful.
Good article or a good document that we'll probably get out to the governing board to look at, to at least start thinking about.
For continued fun times.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, and some of those, some of those, to your point, some of those reserves are dedicated reserves, knowing that they're going to, like, we know that X amount of money is going to be spent in year two to cover the costs that weren't incurred, that, you know, because you're delayed, because you have that year-long delay in payout. So, some of them are known reserve costs, and some of them are unknown, because you don't know what the fluctuation's going to be in the real estate market a year. So, somehow accounting for, here's the bucket that we know is going to go out in year two, and some of them is a cushion for the added level of unknowns.
Yeah, whatever our additional reserve, it may need to actually be, there might need to be subcategories within the reserve. Something to consider.
Well, to kind of go back to that, part of the reason that you want to do that is when you are a state aid-funded district, you're, you always have that fallback when you're in a declining enrollment situation, where you've got a one-year lag in terms of your payments. So, if you decline, you, you'll still get paid at what you received the previous year for that one year. And then, the second year, you feel the impact upon that declining enrollment. When you are a community aid-funded district, community-funded district, if your property tax base declines, granted, it's, doesn't happen very often, but when it does, you don't have that one-year lag.
You just deal right then?
It's it, right there.
Right then.
And so, that's part of the reason that they have those reserves.
Because of the unknown volatility that you're now part of.
Correct.
Do you have to have special credentials to get into the CDA's website to pull down what's on page twelve? Or, or can any member of the public?
Any member of the public is in.
Okay. It's not easy to find, I don't think.
No, you'd probably have to spend some time navigating to find it, but it sounds like it's there.
I think if you go to, from my memory, how I found it is I went to the CDE website, and then in their search function, I typed in inland property taxes, and then it takes you to a page, and there's a link in there to that data.
Thank you.
So, what would you staff like if, if we go home and sleep on? So what would you staff like if, if we go home and sleep on this again tonight and have additional questions? What would be the most appropriate way of sharing that with you and you continuing to collect them next step to that kind of thing?
I think as we talked about in December, continue to send them to me.
Okay.
And we'll compile them and maintain them and look into them. And I think as, as Chris talked about tonight, some, you know, are going to be easy to find answers to and others we either, we need to do more digging and/or they may not be known initially. It may be something that we have to wait for over time. So we're kind of keeping our questions in buckets, if you will, of, well, that's that. And a good analogy to revenue limit and community funded. And so that we can keep track of all of the information. We want to be sure that we can continue to come back regularly to you all to keep you updated on where we are with this. Because at the point where, as Wesley's question, when we have to come back and do a recommendation for a change to our board policy, as an example, we want to have a really long, robust conversation about why are we recommending, staff recommending, the reserve percentage that we will be recommending? And, and to make sure, because I think if, to have a, some people even question our having a reserve higher than the state recommended reserve. And I know over the years, the board has had to revisit for members of the community.
It was a political football a few years ago. I, I don't, I don't think it is anymore.
No, not anymore. I agree. But now that we will be looking at having even a higher reserve because of being a community-funded status and or, you know, in and out of it, it'll just, we have to be able to explain and make sure the trustees are really clear as to why. So.
And along those lines, and the football, whatever the hot potato analogy with the community, one of the additional impacts on us with it flipping back and forth is now in order, and I was thinking of the second interim budget, which comes back to us in.
Mid-March.
Mid-March. Is, you know, we thought it was hard to have the community engaged in budget discussions before.
Yeah, right.
Now we're expecting community members to not only understand our budget process, but two different structures and why you go back and forth between the two, which is going to make it, you know, again, another challenge. Should community members want to be engaged and understand what we're doing with reserves? With why are you choosing to be this, not, no, we're not choosing. So I think part of this at some point will have to be like an FAQ that we put out for community members to understand.
Chris and I have talked about having, whether it's another budget workshop and/or an opportunity, so starting to schedule the superintendent's chats at each of the schools where parents can come and, and be able to ask questions. And so typically, historically in the district, as we've had those, they don't have an agenda per se. Folks just come and talk, but we may very well want to have agenda items to help educate and then also have, if it's a town hall or something like that. Right now, though, we do need to get a little bit through this surge. Because it is all hands on deck.
But if I could say that I think that the reason we record these meetings and getting back to transparency is that if someone really wants to dig in and say, where did this all come from, you can specifically go listen to these exact discussions and when they happened, how they happened and what was said. And as it plays out over a period of time, I mean, as Shelley and I know from old planning commission days, like there was every, there's all these meetings, all these notices, all this information, all this stuff goes out there.
And then at the 11th hour.
At the last minute, someone comes in and says, well, what about the sequel analysis? There's some sort of challenge at the very end and it's just, it, it blows up a lot of hard work because they jump in late and try to just push buttons. But I think as this transparency thing keeps going and this is kind of common knowledge and we build trust with the community, I think it's, I don't think it's as big as a hurdle as it may have been years ago.
How many public inquiries did we get since the last meeting where we had the discussion about this shift in funding?
None, not one. And we did, so Sean was able to, and Teresa able to sniff the recording. So what we sent out in our updates to our parent community was just of the recording of that section, that agenda item, our first interim budget, was what they received through our updates.
Well, I think everyone's dance cards are pretty full right now.
I'm sure everybody is.
I was going to say with the holidays and with the COVID, I'm sure this is not.
Let me learn about LCFF.
It's not high on everybody's holiday. Tennis. So we could very well see, once things settle down, the holidays are over, people start going, wait, what?
Yeah.
And so, absolutely.
Weren't you trying to, or setting up a training or trying to attend or some kind of something to understand more about this community base?
We've joined.
Was that already happening?
Well, we've joined a committee.
Okay.
They call it SF2 and I don't remember what it stands for.
It stands for Sound Finance Squared. And it is for basic aid districts or community-funded districts.
So you joined that, it's the beginning. Okay.
And then there is a symposium, School Services, yes.
Okay, in that case.
Yeah, and I'll, there is a symposium coming up in March that Chris and I will attend and any trustees can join too. It's intended for superintendents, chief business officials and trustees. And it's in Sacramento from nine o'clock to 2:30. So.
Can you say that the date is March 11?
It is March 17th. I believe it's a Wednesday.
Thursday.
Thursday, thank you. March 17th. And I know Shelley has already indicated interest in attending and Rachel, who, as we have noted, isn't able to be at this this evening, she is unable to. But if any other trustees would like to go, of course, we'll take good notes and be able to come back and, and share with you what we've learned at that as well. And because we've joined this consortium, there is no additional cost. So it's a free workshop that we would be able to attend on that day.
I wanted to add a question about the cost.
Will there be snacks?
Maybe not.
There'll be some pizza.
Sacramento, yeah.
Some proper food, not just snacks. Thank you. Snacks.
All right. Thank you once again. To be continued. I'm sure we will continue to help send in any other questions and maybe let this settle while, while you guys have so much else to do at the moment and come back to it when, as we need to. All right, moving on to the consent actions. We have six items. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, we don't have anybody, public comment on this item. Sorry, didn't mean to just assume. Okay, no public comment on this item and no vote. So no public comments. So now we can move on to consent actions. We have six items on consent. Is there anything on the consent docket that anyone has any clarification questions about?
None for me.
Or any, looking around, I'm looking around and seeing no questions in people's eyes, in which case we can entertain a motion to approve.
Oh, move consent. Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any approve, against? No?
No.
Wonderful. Consent actions are approved. And on to board business. We've got committee updates from trustees and approval of meeting minutes. So committee updates, committee updates from trustees. Who would like to go first on any of the committees?
None for me.
None for you. Okay.
None for me.
So I don't have a committee update, but I wanted to share with team and then with the board about the experience I had before the school started with one of my kids having COVID and the excellent and fantastic help I got from Donna Faulkner, who called me at 5:00 PM on Sunday evening and spent half an hour with me, not just chatting, but also really helping me understanding the process to go through the back to school. And my, my kid was sick, was actually not even from this district, but I felt a different reception and a different support. And I have to say, kudos to the process and fantastic support I received. And if I didn't receive that support, I'm sure everybody received that support. It's on the Sunday evening at 5:30, when someone is calling you to take, to talk to you about your family dynamic and where are the kids sleeping, where do they, which bathroom do they use? It was very helpful. And so I wanted to thank everybody here because that was definitely, that did help me that day to go over the level of stress. And also I saw Marcy in the supermarket. That was also very helpful. Thank you. It was a great afternoon. But definitely the elites, having added this, this, this position for this year of Donna helping the district is very meaningful. And when you're under stress, that was really providing a direct support to a family that was definitely not doing so well. So I want to make very clear that was really awesome. Thank you so much.
You bet. I'll be sure to pass that along to Donna.
Really great support.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great feedback. Yeah. I mean, I don't have, I don't have any committee updates. It was the holidays. So there wasn't a lot. It wasn't since our last meeting. Moving on to approval of meeting minutes for the December 14th meeting.
Yep.
Was there anyone who had any, I had just run my edit on that. And that was in the approval of the first interim. We approved the first interim, just as it was explained there. But then there was the friendly amendment or direction to staff to do what we just did. I mean, we did it so, which was to bring the item, was to bring the discussion of our funding structure back for us too. So just to, it was a motion with additional direction to staff, I would say. And that was my only edit on that one.
That being said, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14th board meeting.
As amended.
As amended.
Oh, second.
All right, the motion and a second. We'll just go ahead and do roll call because that's always good to do with minutes. Marie?
Aye.
Wesley?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
And Shelley, aye. All right, so those minutes are approved and superintendent cabinet report.
All righty. So as you noticed that neither Julia nor Eric are with us this evening. So they have a little bit of time off this evening with COVID and being here and supporting the schools in order to keep all of our schools open. And Julia's been doing a fair amount of subbing in the last couple of days. And so to give her more time to get caught up with her regular position and.
She's so queer, she does not have COVID.
She does not.
Okay.
No, she was subbing in a classroom.
No, no, I get it.
To support and without having enough substitutes. And so she's been at a number of schools this week, first grade, sixth grade, White Hill Resource, and then doing lunch and break supervision at a number of schools. And so, but she did, I told her I would do her updates for her. So focused on equity and that is that we're super excited about our upcoming parent education event on how to raise, how to raise an anti-racist. And it will be facilitated by Charmaine Pattinson, founder of Plinkett, a leading online child development resource, and Ms. Sasha Suzuki Graham, Plinkett contributor and co-founder of the award-winning Dear White Women podcast and co-author of Dear White Women, Let's Get Uncomfortable, Talking About Racism. And that evening will be on September, sorry, January, January 26th. Don't have it here off the top of my head, January 26th in the evening. It's been advertised to our, our families through newsletters. Principals will be doing outreach. We put it in our updates. So there's been a, a fair amount of advertising for that and will continue to be up until the event. And it will be a Zoom event. And so it is free to all of our, members of our community, Ross Valley community. And then we will be launching our second set of social justice book bundles on February 2nd at our district wide-grade level team meeting. And the teach, lead teachers will model using one of the books and the conversation guide that goes along with it. And then going backwards a little bit, on Monday, January 3rd, Professional Development Day, right after the winter break, was, the day's focus was on racial equity. And the sites did some of their own work, work on their own and provided time for teachers to dive into our racial equity plan, the actions, such as examining the literary canon and recognizing and celebrating heritage months. And then Julie has also been busy creating a resource repository for teachers that they can go to anytime. It'll be by grade level. And it'll be a central place to house all the materials, lessons, activities and articles. That way, any teachers in the district can access it at any time to add to their repertoire. And it would be an ongoing location or repository that'll get added to annually or as we go through the years. And also teachers can contribute to it directly as well. So she's busy putting that together and being able to, and to be able to launch that soon. And then right now she is working on our Martin Luther King support to the classrooms. And we'll be getting that out shortly. So I think that's it from curriculum and instruction. And then Eric, his updates aren't necessarily timely for this evening's board meeting. So at our January 25th, when he's back with us, he'll provide the updates then. And then Chris, anything more from business?
I just wanted to touch real fast on the governor's budget proposal. It is a COLA of 5.33%. And there are no new dollars for STIRS or PROS increases that have been happening. So that, that was a discipline. The governor is all-in for the TK and early childhood program funding, to the point that they're also rebenching Prop 98 for the TK. And that was part of the discussion with the SF Squared Group, SF2, is are they going to also then be providing additional categorical dollars for that, the kindergarten, the TK program? Because otherwise, there's no additional funding if they don't do that for the basic aid districts. So that, that's a major discussion point. There was no indication at this particular point what that looks like, but they should have more answers as you enter early February. The governor's budget proposal does fund the universal meal program for next year. There's additional dollars for the expanded learning opportunities. So that, that is moving forward. Early intervention. So one of the programs that is near and dear to the heart of the, the governor is the early intervention that has to do with his, his, he has dyslexia. And so it impacted his ability to read at an early age. So he's putting additional dollars to this early intervention. He's also putting additional dollars to the base grants of the special education. So that will help a lot of districts in the state. And I'm not sure it will have any impact upon Marin County because we're so high in terms of our base grants for special ed. But it'll be interesting to see what that, that looks like. But in a nutshell, that's, that's what's going to happen. Ray?
All right. And then superintendent, I just wanted to, you know, we're, we've gotten away from doing COVID updates in terms of regular standing agenda item. But I just wanted to acknowledge that with coming back from the winter break, it's been all hands on deck once again because of the surge in Marin and the impact on our schools. And we are committed to ensuring that all of our students and our staff, students get to go to school every day, staff gets to go to work every single day in their respective workplaces or school places. And it has been a heavy lift and a heavy load. The number of folks who have needed to quarantine or test, it's just been a huge lift. So our administrative assistants, we're also now gathering vaccination records of all of our eligible students to where we knew that we would be doing that in the new year. But we thought we'd have at least a little breathing space in terms of being able to gather that. But the way that you implement the isolation or quarantine protocols is based on whether you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. So it's critically important that we know the status of all of our students.
Yep.
We have that information for staff for, since the beginning of the school year.
What kind of complaints do we get in terms of people testing? I know it wasn't mandatory, but do, do we have, maybe we don't have numbers yet.
We do.
First half we do. No, I'm telling you for our pupils.
The tests that were given. There, there were a, so folks, it was, it was a recommendation that they test, not a, not a mandate.
Maybe we're not tracking the numbers. I don't know.
Well, there's, a lot of folks may have utilized the test, but didn't enter them into primary health. And so one of the, the data points that we do have for tracking is when we come, have come back into the school, is the students don't have tests to utilize. And with the supply that is provided so by the state of California, so Ross Valley School District participates in the CDPH or state testing program. So Ross Valley School District participates, um, in the CDPH or state, um, testing program. And that's where we get our tests, uh, they come to us through the Marin County Office of Ed, some we get directly. Uh, but there is a testing shortage. And so what we know is that, um, the students, um, they did utilize their tests, um, before they came back, but we just don't necessarily have the, the reporting and the data on that. The majority of folks who did enter into primary health, they entered negative results. The number that were entered into primary health that were positives was much lower percentage of those that reported. So there's two ways, two mechanisms, um, for reporting. And the, we have one way that the AAs, administrative assistants at the schools, can enter the data directly when they receive it from, uh, the parents. And the other way is for the parents or guardians to upload, um, directly into primary health. One of the really critical reasons we want families to register their children in primary health is because that's the consent. We cannot give a family a test that we have from the state of California unless we have a consent form on file. And so, um, our AAs are following up with families, Donna Faulkner, who Marie mentioned a little earlier, are following up with families to get a lot of this data. And this is all on top of the schools taking attendance, taking phone calls, students who come in with phonies. It's, you know, it, it is a lot. So we're looking at how to continue to provide, um, additional short-term support, uh, for the school sites. And then we know the impact on our teachers, um, you know, they're, they're teaching. They're trying to put the best lessons, the best activities forward, um, to the students. And right now, we have a lot of students who are out of school. A lot of teachers, a lot of other staff who are missing work, um, because of exposures. And so, um, we are really thankful that in our school district, we believe that our parents absolutely are erring on the side of caution and not sending their children to school with, um, any symptoms of any kind, whether it's maybe COVID related or they're just not feeling well. Um, students do have a really hard time learning and engaging in school if they're not well. And so, um, when families, you know, if they err on the side of caution, that definitely, um, assists in the education of children, keeping kids, um, healthy and safe and our staff healthy and safe while at school. And of course, um, we know that our children and our employees go home to their families. And so we want our schools to be the safest places and the healthiest places possible because it keeps our community healthy and safe. And as, um, on all the calls that Dr. Willis, um, and Dr. Santora, we've had, we had three last week. Oh, I had four because there was a superintendent's one as well. And what the data is still really, still showing is that our schools are the safest places. And, um, we, at least as of right now, still do not have any in-school transmissions. We have a lot of exposures, but the exposures have not turned into positive cases now. What Dr. Willis has also said is that this week and next are gonna be potentially the highest.
Right, yeah.
Aspect of the surge. So of course that could change. But, uh, just really appreciate all of our employees, all of our staff, all of the folks who are coming in to help support, um, everybody here, you know, even Teresa at the district office. She's taking to supporting a school. Um, we have, um, another, uh, because of the, the workload. So there, um, Nurse Megan, Donna and Teresa have split up the schools to provide additional support. So, um, and then we have another person who, I hope by now, has already gotten fingerprinting paperwork and met with Lori to get that so that she can come in on a short-term basis to support.
Plus, we have a meeting in two weeks too, right? So we should be able to have another set of data for the.
Say that, first part?
January twenty-fifth.
Yes, we can get more update then as to what the impact is. Yeah, but it, people are exhausted. We've heard that, um, you know, some of our folks, it's exhausting and they, they're, they care so much and they want to ensure the health and safety of everyone in the school setting, um, that that, um, pressure, um, is, um, hard and they want to do everything exactly right. And the, probably the hardest part of it, which is, it's okay, but the guidelines, even when we came back to school, they changed the next day. Three of the eight that they changed originally. And then every day, we check the isolation quarantine guidelines because they will change on a daily, if not during the day basis. And Donna was on a call, um, this afternoon, um, with, and there will be continued changes to the quarantine guidelines, um, we're waiting for the final version to come out. But it is going to be, um, really, as soon as you think you understand how to implement a protocol, um, we'll need to shift and we'll need to change. And so that's, um, going to continue, but I do believe, um, that with following the science. And I think that we have, Marin Health and Human Services is one of the finest out there. And when I talk to friends of mine who are either, uh, have kids attending or they live in other, um, counties and other areas or superintendents outside of Marin County, we are really to be thankful here, all of the members of our community for the tireless efforts and, um, the support that we have from Marin Health and Human Services as well as Marin County Office of Ed. I make a phone call and somebody at MCE picks up the phone every time I call with a question or, um, reminding them to update something. So it's, um, it is fantastic, but, um, just want to acknowledge all of our staff, all of our families and all of our students, it still is a lot, a lot to navigate and contend with, so. And that's on top of doing everything else that we, uh, are trying to do in schools, so.
Oh, yeah, school.
School, yeah, yeah, trying to educate those kids. So I think that's it. And because of, um, some of the guidelines have changed with, um, like the size of gatherings and so on, and we have pushed out or changed how we're offering our TK and kindergarten preview nights. And so Manners will go as scheduled in January, but it's now going to be via Zoom. The other schools have moved them off into February and that is a recommendation of, um, Dr. Willis is if you can postpone your events, please do reschedule them as best you can. So those have shifted, we've sent, um, information out to all of our preschool directors, um, letting them know the changes. Each of the school's web pages have been updated, our district webpage, the principals are putting it in their newsletters on the day of the event. The principals will also have notices in the windows, uh, where the venue was to originate, the library is an example, to let them know, as an example, if any families didn't get the message at Manner that it's a Zoom, then they'll be able to have that.
Is, is Manner gonna have any in-person or then something or another for people to come to?
The school sites are enhancing their tours. So that families can get that in-school in-person. And then PEG will also be setting up a chat or, and a meet and greet, um, for families who have any questions that they, um, will not have gotten to or that kind of thing, and that will, um, be in-person as well. Um, and then our new student registration has begun. So, um, yesterday, the tenth, is our online registration for the twenty-two, twenty-three year began. And then our in-person component of the registration, it's a two-part process, opens on February third. And so, um, that, um, is humming along. I haven't had it, usually I check schoolment on the first day to see how many.
I just been too busy.
A little busy. But yeah, so that, uh, that is coming along too.
I think it's the second.
Oh, the second, oh, yes, that's right, it is, thank you. I have the third in my head, but I always look at the calendar and say, nope, it's the second. So the second, Wednesday, the second of February is when in-person begins. Thank you, Teresa, for clarifying.
So we'll have some information for the March second interim in terms of ideas and student numbers and that kind of thing?
We will anticipate, yeah. Um, so kind of the process that we use is we take our current students, we roll them up into, uh, next year and then we do take a look at our, um, registrations that are pending and or have been verified in schoolment and, uh, take a look at what those numbers, um, might be and try to factor in. And if, historically, the way that, um, the business department has done it and the way that I did it in my role, is we have been off in our projections by maybe two or three kids. And it's been fascinating to see that we have different ways of approaching it, but we've come back. So it's a nice checks and balances in terms of trying to get as close as we can for projecting, um, student enrollment.
Great.
It's an art.
That's enough, for sure.
Definitely. So I think that's it for updates.
Hang on, Marcy, we, next meeting is in two weeks, I'm like.
Next meeting is the twenty-fifth.
Right. Um, and then we have just one meeting.
One meeting in February and that I believe is on the eighth.
Got it. All right, uh, which kind of is a nice segue into the future board topics and direction to have that look forward into our next meeting. So just again, Marcy and I keep a running list of, um, topics for meetings out into the future. So if you all trustees have any topics that you feel, um, are, need to be put onto an agenda, just get in touch with one of us and we'll make sure and add that to the list and put it on the appropriate agenda going forward. Is there any other future board topics, direction, questions about the next upcoming meetings or anything like that before we look at wrapping up?
I do look forward to seeing some more students coming back, so getting a presentation from another school.
Yeah, we.
We had started and, and I do hope that, you know, when it's the right time. Right now, it might not even be a good time, you know what I'm saying, Marcy?
Yeah.
It could be too stressful for a principal to organize that, but hopefully we can get back to that, maybe, you know.
They've all been scheduled, so each of the principals has selected a, um, a board meeting date. I can't remember if, I just don't remember off the top of my head when the next one is. But you're right, if they, if it, if it is scheduled for February.
Okay, so, yeah, not in January.
Then we definitely will want to move it. So I'll talk, I'll take a look at the list and talk with the principal and be sure.
Make sure it will be safe first, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
They make it like adult only, but I just do look forward to seeing.
I know, it's great to have kids here, you know?
Yeah.
So fun.
Any other meeting, debrief topics before we do the old gavel to adjourn?
Yes, no.
No, yes, no.
Just I'm waiting to go home.
All right. Wonderful, then we can, it is, let me pull up the time. It is nine oh, nine oh nine.
Nine oh nine.
Nine oh nine, and we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
You have a gavel.
I know. There we go, adjourn the meeting at nine oh nine.